On the agenda, so. The public hearing. Union Street Eversource is petitioning to install five new poles along Union Street for an infrastructure improvement project to increase reliability in the town of Plainfield by replacing the primary cable and installing additional cable north to the substation on North Central Street. Reason: The existing pole line along Union Street is inaccessible for repairs and Eversource's existing easement does not include installing new primary cable north on Union Street. Peter, you got anything to say?
Oh, I have nothing to add. That basically sums up our petition to install the five new poles.
Kim, Kimberly, you got anything?
I do. So as you know, Plainfield has its own municipally-owned fiber optic network. We have a pole attachment agreement that we negotiated with Eversource six years ago. Whenever Eversource replaces or adds new poles, our town has to incur expense to move our wires to the new poles and/or extend the network. Our pole attachment agreement allows us to be reimbursed for extraordinary costs if the poles are replacements. So I just want to understand, in the petition that was filed, it says that the poles are going to be new. I think that you're replacing poles that you can't maintain anymore. Is that correct?
From Eversource?
Yes.
No, how about you, Roberto?
Hi.
So. Uh, we just started discussing the pole hearing. Kimberly's asking, replacing poles or what's the?
Or installing them first, yeah.
Yes, mainly, mainly installing new ones on Union Street here. And the ones that are in place already will be replaced in place. So there's a few here heading this way, right?
Mm-hmm.
These will be replaced in place. And then the gap where there's none today will bring in, will install new poles. There's two or three poles that are kind of behind the tree line. Those will be relocated, at least for Eversource. Verizon will have to do as well to relocate. Otherwise, if they don't, we may end up with electric roadside.
Yeah, right.
And Verizon into the woods, right? So it's a mix. It's a mix. To bridge the gap, it's new poles. The existing will be replaced with new one.
I have no issue with the infrastructure improvement. I think it's good for all utilities to be maintaining, improving the infrastructure. I just would like to be clear that Plainfield will seek some relief or reimbursement for the cost for us to move our fiber onto the replacement poles, which is allowed per our license attachment agreement. So just if you want to note that as, as part of the approval process, that would be great.
And can I follow up to that? So are you seeking, for example, Eversource to finance and then you procure the contract that you will execute? Or is the same, if Eversource procures the contract and performs the transfer, you know, have a contract and perform the transfer at the same time, then installation is done, does it?
So as you may know from working in this region, most of the towns that own their own broadband networks, we are one of 20, have contracted with Whip City Fiber based in Westfield. They typically do the work for us as network operator. Sometimes there's infield work where you all will just transfer the wires while you're up on the poles, and that's better for everybody. But sometimes your crews don't want to touch.
Right. No, no, we, we, it wouldn't be electric crews.
We.
That's a matter of.
Yeah. So we, you typically notify us when your work is done. Whip City rolls their trucks. I get a bill and I'm gonna want to seek some reimbursement.
Here you go. Uh, I want to know what the scope and front, the cost are for this overall payment projection. What's this, you know, upgrade and cost?
Who? It doesn't cross town any.
No, in terms of Eversource's budget. Because in terms of their public profile, I have concerns, you know, for example, in Springfield, they didn't pay taxes for 10 years and had to settle 41 billion bucks. So if they're gonna disrupt the road, if you get into the wetlands and all that stuff, what are we gonna do? Are they gonna promise to do it? Do we have to have a bond to make sure that you are correct?
Well, they're not going into, it's just gonna be between the road and the ditch line. They ain't.
Did they get easements in there all the way?
Everything's been looked at and it's all good, as far as I was told.
So how about your site recovery? What, what, sorry, site recovery?
Site recovery, what do you mean?
You're gonna be going in the ground for the poles, you got trucks and stuff in there, so you got a wetland out there, right? So has it been flagged?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So environmental will be working on the permitting. I believe we are outside of the bumper for the work that will be done. I believe the bumper is on your feet from, from a wetland, last pole, last new pole, right? So new infrastructure will need to be permitted.
Right.
New infrastructure, there's an exemption under the repair, right? Uh, but the newest infrastructure that's closest to is outside of the, on your feet. So, but environmental will take care of that in terms of making sure that our purpose is squared away. Uh, you were asking about the disruption, right, in terms of, during the poles, if not all of them are, all roadside, uh, you know, five foot off.
Yeah, you got a bunch in the middle of the woods out there, too.
Yes, so those are, aren't Eversource. So there's the comps, uh, and the electric utility. Eversource will remove, uh, electric utilities out of there. If communications looks like Whip City, or, you know, fiber, the towns interested are relocating as well, the last one will be Verizon. And if they do choose to relocate, then everybody gets out of there and those poles will be removed permanently from the woods.
And now what do you do with the site in terms of being cleared up?
Uh, from like, uh, like, generally, they remove the pole and then they fill in with the soil that is, uh.
Native.
Removed, yes, yes, from like, you know, vicinity, like, uh, from the new installation, right?
Yeah, okay.
Well, they put mats down. They don't disrupt, you know, they put mats.
Yeah, I know. But that's a, that's a pretty heavily wet area. And we get a lot of water trans under the road and over the road at times. That's why I'm asking the question. So if there's disruption, who handles that cost?
Generally, maybe, generally, uh, frame construction that we do, we try to, you know, leave it as close as how we found it. So if there's disruption that's caused by Eversource, they do their best to mitigate and/or repair, uh, upon completion of the project. So it's not like, you know, they'll disrupt and, you know, and track marks and things like that and just leave.
It's not worth it, but they start by, it's more important to just rupture the water flow because everything comes down, that goes above shape.
Uh, it shouldn't affect any of it. Shouldn't affect any of it.
Well, we hope.
Yeah.
Yeah. But now, will there be any kind of CONCON involved, like the, you know, clients or anyone, you know, along those lines?
I imagine they've looked at it or Highway Boss looked at it.
Well, has the CONCON had anything to say?
Jack?
We have not examined it, we have not been asked to examine it. And there are exemptions for replacing utilities.
Well, does the town have any plans showing where these poles are going?
It's in the petition.
It's in the, I don't know.
It's in the petition. I've got, I've got it, I know, you're, um, but they have paper copies up there.
Mm-hmm. So you do have, you do have a plan submitted by Eversource.
Oh, yeah. They just don't wing it. They come up with plans and submit it.
How do we know there?
Just they. They've waited all over town for three years.
Um, they've been here for forty some years, I know, was that? The other thing I want to point out is that the, if there's any instructions to, uh, uh, street trees, it's out of the tree one should be notified.
It's already been notified and they've walked it with highway. It's all been.
Is that, is that true?
Yes.
Like they, yes, they have that heavy sauce?
Yeah.
Just made it out from here.
Yeah.
It's not a sparring here. Is that true?
Yes, yes, we walked with, uh, highway.
And the tree warden, yes.
Who's, who's the tree one?
I, I mean, I personally don't, I was, I'm willing to came up with the project, to design the project, but, uh.
Well, it's gonna get the wires out of the woods, so the power doesn't get knocked out as much. So it's bad.
What does that do to your plans for re-aligning the road and all that stuff?
Nothing.
Back of the church, anything?
Nothing. It moves it to actually the, there's a town hall, moves it, stays on this side of the road, crosses once, one more pole up by, oh, can't think of his name, with the old barn foundation. Kramer's. Then it switches all to the right side of the road all the way up. So no more through the woods on the left side of the road.
Okay. And who has, they have an easement already established on the right hand side because of Whip City's activity?
Oh, the, the utility poles have had an easement for over 95 years with the town of Plainfield.
Right. Where these poles are going are in between the road and the ditch line. So they're less than five feet from the bank or something like that.
Right.
It'll benefit our, our grid.
Yeah, the main goal of the project really, and as you've seen with all the work occurring on, on West Main here, is to really bring alternative feed. Today, if we lose the station, we have about 300 or so customers on the west side of Plainfield that are out until we get the station back. Once this is completed, there's an alternative source coming from Saboy that, that would, uh, that would backfeed these 100 customers, uh, if we have a station.
It's gonna be three phases?
Yes.
Three days. So it's not three phases now?
No, no.
And a question? Um, I'm, I'm sorry, may I have a copy of the, where the five poles are going to be located, please?
Yes.
Done. Something else. Um, and as I asked you, um, my, I don't know where these, thank you, five poles are going, but my well is not far from the edge of the road. And I have a concern about, is this going to affect my water supply?
Are you, the house almost in the corner here where the pole is like almost an island?
No, I'm on the, uh, west side of the road, near the cemetery, the little brown house.
Okay.
Is a new, is a new pole going in that area or?
Yeah, in terms of the specifics of the design, uh, probably the reason of that is that it's very speaking.
Looks like old, uh. I'm there now. One fifty eight eleven.
This, this pole here, you probably remember, uh, across from your region?
Yes.
Yes, so that pole is existing?
Yes.
So, um, it looks like here will be replaced in place. So generally, they replace this, as folks doing this location as feasible in the field, and that's generally, it'll be off by maybe a foot or two.
So it's gonna be on the eastern side of the road, not on, not on the west.
Yes, correct, correct, correct.
And you're not putting anything on the left, on the west street.
Not, not in this section. So if you call it here, it'll be on the, on the.
On the eastern side.
Yes, all the way and then it crosses to the existing pole. And this is pretty much, you know, the net here. I believe this is a pole that's on that anywhere, so water, um, system there. But yeah, no, nothing, nothing.
Nothing. Thank you, finish. Well, that's my, my sister.
Any other questions?
They have a schedule?
That I don't know. I believe, I believe, and, uh, there's some error with this, but I believe they want to start hopefully July or August. So definitely, uh, they'll start relatively early. The same crew that's, uh, working, uh, right here on, uh, that was made, that we saw spreading the wires there. So they're trying to ideally target both.
And how, how long operation?
That's not, I apologize.
Will the road be passable during that term?
Should be. In most roads, they put poles in.
Yeah, I know, traffic. Traffic control or whatever.
And you can get to both ends of the road by driving around, too.
Yeah, true.
Any other questions?
I move that we approve the pole plan that Eversource has presented.
On second, Beth?
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we all have to sign this or something?
Yes, all of us.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for approving the minutes of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
I move that we approve the minutes of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
July board vote approval of special town meeting warrant.
Um, I'd like to say a few words about that first, because there were some last minute corrections. Um. I spent a good part of the day on the phone with, um, KP Law, and there are a couple of things that were taken out from what we saw before. But basically, for the, um, for the police revolving fund, it has to be a bylaw. And so, um, that means we have to specify the purpose, the expenditure limitations, sort of all the particulars of how it works, where its funding comes from, um, supporting requirements, interest, authorized revolving funds, uh, people who can take money out, all of that. So we added all of that language to the town warrant. You'll be able to read it when it's posted. Um, and then for the capital planning committee, originally, we thought, I know that there's a big concern of the finance committee that we had be able to assemble the group of people who are going to do that and have them start their work, get themselves organized over the summer and start their work next year. But really, in order to do it the right way, we ought to have a full town meeting, annual town meeting, and create a bylaw for it. And what we, what we decided was a, um, an expedited compromise, uh, was to, um, create a capital planning committee. We don't need to identify what their funding is or anything, just to begin the planning process, not the part that would involve any kind of creation of a capital planning stabilization fund or any of that. And that will be brought to the annual town meeting next spring, and this committee will be folded into that bylaw. So I just want that to be transparent. Um, and then there was no change in Article Four. We eliminated Article Five, which I, I'm trying to remember what that one was. That was, oh, that was to create a bylaw to, um, but only cultivation and production of cannabis in town. All other cannabis businesses would be prohibited. But we can't do that in a town bylaw. It has to be done through a zoning bylaw, and that has to go through, through the, uh, planning board. So we just took that one out for now, and we will, we were doing this in order to include, um, that constraint in the new host community agreement that we are going to be negotiating soon with, um, the people at twenty seven, the new owner of the, what is that? I guess that's the northern half of twenty seven.
Hello? I think we lost the meeting.
The, the quantum majority, which is like 90% of the people present have to vote. And it's the language about that. So we, he, he changed that language a little bit. And just, and in case anybody had seen the previous draft of the warrant, I don't want you to be surprised when you see different language in this one. This was all drafted this afternoon by our KP lawyer, general counsel for the town. Um, then the next. And, and it's pretty clear because it does specify what the current language in the bylaw is and what the proposed language would be. So it'll be really clear when people read these. Um, Article Six was about changing how the, um, conduct of annual and, and special town meetings are governed. We have a bylaw that says it has to be by Roberts Rules of Order. And the moderator asked if we could please make it, um, comply with the, a, and a publication called Town Meeting Time, a handbook of parliamentary procedure, which is published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association and is used commonly across the state. So we changed that. This is just cleaning up little stuff. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a major change. Um, but that's my opinion. And again, it gives the current bylaw section and the proposed bylaw section. But those were the changes. So there are now, instead of, instead of seven articles, there are six articles. And we have a clean copy here ready for us to sign.
Goodbye. Sorry. Are you accepting comments from the?
Oh, yeah.
Where was the original, uh, articles posted? I can see it.
It wasn't in the, it wasn't in the.
It's being posted tomorrow. Because.
But we're voting out of tonight.
We, no.
We closed it last week.
We closed it, we closed it two weeks ago. Tonight, the select board has to sign the articles. And tomorrow, Ed has to post the articles. And then they're available for everybody to read for the next two weeks. This is for the special town meeting on June twenty fifth.
My point is, my point here is, the public doesn't have the opportunity to discuss this with the board's alignment prior to this evening.
They do. They, they, we have a meeting every two weeks.
And we've talked about these multiple times in those meetings.
Right.
Different people have brought different ideas forward. And then it's handed over to the staff to draft the articles. And then we have it reviewed by the moderator. And then we have it reviewed by the lawyers to make sure that we're.
So it'll be, I'll for review, the review for the next two weeks for people to learn about.
And if you want, and, and when we have a special town meeting, you can make a motion from the floor to amend it.
By that time, it's a little late.
Well, not if you want block it or something.
I think, I mean, I've been to the website frequently, and I did not see these articles listed for discussion.
Because we just, uh, approved the minutes tonight, so that doesn't get posted until the minutes are approved. So.
It's fine.
We don't usually post all of the documents that we receive.
Okay, I'm not getting anywhere with this. I'll post it in advance. Um, but you said you, correct me if I'm wrong here, but some of the articles you changed because it would be changed in the town bylaw, and you wanted to, uh, wait to end the town meeting to, um, to have that discussion.
Only.
Which I agree.
Only the one that hasn't been.
That's my point. Other ones do have changed to the bylaws, and you're not waiting to the annual town meeting for that discussion.
Some of them, it, it would be very, um, inopportune to delay them for a year. And that's why we're having a special town meeting, so that we can discuss them at the special town meeting. And any problems you have, you can raise or you can make a motion. But things like creating, we tried to create the, um, police revolving fund at whatever the last special town meeting was had, that we had. And we couldn't do it because we didn't do it the right way. So, you know, we're, some of us are learning as we go along. But the point is, it, this is not the first time you've heard about these things. And it's certainly not the first time that you've had an opportunity to ask questions about them.
Well, it is.
Were you not at the, when was that one, Justin? Do you remember? That was the annual town meeting. At the annual town meeting, we had a warrant in the annual town meeting about creating a capital, a, a police department revolving fund. We also had an article in there about creating a capital planning committee. And both of those did not pass. They got tabled because they needed more work. They didn't comply with state law. So.
But do you think?
And that was on May third.
But do you think that the more work required included the public at large?
What we had to comply with was mass general law. The, the concept of what we were trying to do was out there. And the discussion took place on May third. And then, and then we had to make it legal. We had to make it comply with mass general law. And so we were tweaking it and researching it and that sort of thing. And then we got the lawyers to finally do it. So I, I don't think this is anything new.
I'm not getting anywhere with the board. I'll, I'll stop there. But I just want to go on record and say, I think that the public at large is not informed as well as they should be, needs more sunshine.
It's the first of the two week posting law.
Yeah, but a little late again. My point is, by the time it gets a special town meeting, for any, anybody in the public, it's kind of late. It's been discussed, it's been agreed to by the, uh, select board, or whomever, whatever board is proposing a change in the, the time it gets to the town meetings. The special town meeting, and again, not the annual town meeting, it's a little bit late.
It was discussed at the annual town meeting. But with all due respect, I will disagree with your general statement that things are not widely enough known. Um, I think that there is some responsibility if there are articles in the annual town meeting that you care about that didn't pass. You have to follow up on that. And if, um, if you are still dissatisfied at the special town meeting, you are perfectly welcome to make a motion to change something, to amend the language, to amend the article. And that's been done. I've seen it done. And so, I, I mean, we're only three volunteers.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Paulie Ryan in Love and Windsor Avenue. I'm just wondering what, how you would suggest, uh, things be posted differently so that it does reach the public in a wider?
Well, a couple suggestions, yeah. But one.
What are they?
The agenda with this meeting should include, should have included the proposed articles. I would also recommend that such information gets put into the Plainfield Post in addition to the website. And I don't believe even one of those would be the case.
Last meeting, we had a big discussion about the post. Stuff gets edited and you can't put in all, everything in.
Is that, that last meeting does not get posted until?
We were, after this, we were talking about the Plainfield Post. We, they won't post the whole thing.
Because they got the control.
We don't control the post. They print what they want.
They used to.
They don't anymore, so. And the biggest thing is people taking the steps to find. And the biggest thing is people taking the steps to find out themselves by coming to meetings, to talking to people. I mean, the information's out there and you just got to find it.
The fact is, you have to come to every once a lightning meeting to be, bring up to date to these issues. You can't simply go on the website and look at it because they aren't there.
Right, because last meeting just got approved, so they won't be on there till this week.
There's a two week lag on minutes being posted.
That's my point. Well, that's how the law is.
They can't be posted till the. And we can't approve something unless we're in a public meeting.
May I, Delilah has her hand risen. Go ahead, Delilah.
I just had a question about, because I, I know that you can't prove, put the final warrant up until it's approved and you all have voted on it, right? But could you put dra, a draft warrant up? Is that possible?
Information out.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear anything.
I'm saying you could post news on the website. That this is always just being proposed at the next meeting instead of waiting for the next meeting.
Like a status column running up and down.
I guess I'm just wondering, because I, I know that Judy's been working hard on it, but you can't, I know that the final ones can't be put up there until they vote on it and approve it. So that's, I think where some of the rub is for the request that's being made. And I'm curious if there's some comfort with putting a draft up there, like there's a way to put draft. I know that for the finance committee, we put our, the proposed budgets that we got from each department because we, we couldn't put their final budgets up, but we could say they were proposed. Like maybe there's something between being able to see the final warrant when it's already, that's already been discussed and voted on, and then it feels a little rushed. But there's, you know, these articles as to Judy's point that have been talked about, but maybe not made public on the web. The way to make them public could possibly be putting the draft on the website.
The board could issue a news statement and post it on the website. Does that minutes is just what the board is planning on doing at the next meeting?
That's what the town grogger does.
What?
It's not official. It's not official. What time of some.
This is a strong argument for a town administrator.
Right. It's not gonna be a.
No, we do not. We do not have a paid staff member to do this stuff.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. You have one, you have one opinion. Thank you.
And can I say something? Wasn't this, the draft that everyone's asking about was complete like Thursday? So if it were posted, then that would only be a few days between today and the draft. And it, I, it's like it's so different from the draft that it would just confuse people. That's my opinion of it.
The lawyers have advised me not to widely distribute legal documents before they're in a public forum. And so that's part of why, I mean, I have a legal letter tonight that we'll talk about later that, that has been proposed to to be sent to the new owners of the property on Bow Street that we have so many problems with over the last several years. And we got a draft. And they told me explicitly not to post that until it was final. And we discussed it with the relevant committees. We discussed it with mostly the conservation commission because it related to a court order. But, I mean, I don't think, I don't think you are completely aware of the constraints that we have to self, have to live within as well.
Are you bringing the law by doing that?
Um.
I'm not going to find out.
Well, I mean, you've got counsel. They can tell you one way or the other. You're right. You have counsel.
Still got to ask.
They have to. Don't complain about the legal line item in the budget then, please. Because that would mean they would have to read every single document that we were considering.
And then we pay them.
And then we pay them. And we have typically tried to constrain that. They also, I mean, a lot of the conversations with the lawyers are completely protected because they are it's my privilege. And so they get skittish about putting their confirmator on something that's going to be public. I mean, every document I get from them says that, you know, this is attorney's claim. So, I mean, we do the best we can. We certainly will talk to anybody. I get phone calls from people in town all the time. I'm sure that.
I phone my cell phone number is right on the website and I've gotten phone calls at ten o'clock at night and I will talk to the person.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I, I think the frustration you're hearing is that for those who care deeply, you need to take it upon yourself to reach out and say, I'd like to know more about this. And, and none of these, this is not the first time you've heard about any of these topics.
Any other questions?
So, do we have to vote on signing the town warrant or just signing?
Yeah, well.
That's a vote?
Yes.
I move that we accept the town warrant as for the special town meeting on June twenty fifth as presented. And posted by the end of business tomorrow.
I'm trying to set that by motion.
All in favor?
I.
You don't have to wait fourteen days. You can do it twenty days. Says at least fourteen days.
Right.
Look at how we struggled. We get it fourteen days in advance. Or tell me how we're going to get it done twenty days in advance. I mean, I'm serious.
I know, but people ask you.
Next on the agenda, police department discussion of police cruisers.
All right.
Okay, back in April, we had discussed with the finance committee, obviously purchasing a, purchasing a used cruiser. Well, it's going to be five weeks, close to thirty thousand dollars. They don't have to be outfitted. Uh, which might be even closer to forty. Uh, we were working with MHQ who outfits cruisers. They gave us some figures on a five-year lease. It's a lease to own. After five years, the vehicles are ours. I believe those are dollar a piece. Uh, these num, the numbers, I'm sure I could knock down a little bit. There's some, I'm closer, a few things are similar on the high. So the first payment will be due in a year. Uh, it will be due in June, July of twenty twenty six. Uh, that will be approximately forty thousand dollars, maybe, I mean, I would say forty thousand. The, with the revolving fund from police details, which would be the cruiser fees. Uh, that would sustain the payments for the next four years for, actually I should say, because the next payment wouldn't be due until June, July of twenty twenty six. So we would have a full two years to come up with the money for the second payment. Uh, the payments you have are what we are getting to town for police details. Uh, currently there are fifteen outstanding detail invoices which ended this past Friday. Uh, that'll, that'll be the top line. There are other ones that go back a few years myself and Howard has been working on that to get caught up with those amounts. Uh, the, the ongoing project, project I believe one sixteen is coupled with ten officers a day. So that they're working forty days a week. That's forty in our shifts per week. Our department's taking approximately ten of those, maybe more. So that's why I put the ten figure in there. Uh, projected revenue is the cruise fee will be three thousand six hundred up until July first. Uh, July first, we have a rate increase, both hourly rate as well as cruiser rates. Uh, this project is going to go until the end of the year. They said, you know, maybe until probably summer. So these amounts were, I just went to the end of October. Uh, and as you can see, our cruiser fees averaging ten per week, it was in twenty seven thousand. So we're almost at, at, you know, we're pretty close to that amount before the end of the year for the next payment. Uh, the previous, the, the first day trying to be is what we have. Those are the amounts we have from last July and so forth.
So I'm, can I ask a question about this, sort of trying to iterate between the two? Um, so we're getting two new Ford interceptors. And is, is the, so this is, if we're doing a five-year loan, it would be forty one thousand dollars a year, forty thousand, seven, seventy eight, seventy nine? I was looking at three, four, five, and I'm going, is that year, three year, four year as well?
That would be a three-year lease, four-year lease for five years.
I was confused. I thought you were laying out the payment structure for the whole thing. What's the payment in, at, in the first year?
It would be the, it would be that forty thousand, seven, seventy eight per year.
Oh, and then it would be for five years after?
Correct. Four years after.
Okay, sorry.
Total of five payments.
All right.
The interest rate is not horrible either.
But I saw one thing there. So in this lease, it's not a lease like a normal person would get. It's a town lease. It's a five-year loan. We buy the, we can buy the car from them for a dollar for each car. If the town, if some, for some reason, we get cut short and we don't want them, they, it stops. We don't want to pay it. The cars go back. So we can totally get out of it without being penalized, which is a very important thing that everybody's thinking about. Well, what happens in the future here? So it was four years and they said, and the, the town said, no, we don't want it, whatever. Then it can go back without being penalized. So, uh, which would be crazy if we have all that money invested in it. But I'm just saying, we can get out of the lease for no money. We don't have to pay it all.
So I have some other questions about this, the source of funding. Um, why do we have twenty past due invoices from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four?
Those were, I, I took over detailed scheduling of invoices billing back in, I believe, October. Uh, before that, it was, it was Howard's. Uh, there's some, just some people prior to that. Uh, we're, we're currently working a few more, you know, we're sending reminder letters, you know, new invoices. We've already gotten several back, but as of current, there's a, there's a probably twenty.
Do you, I mean.
Well, for example.
Why are you showing that? Thanks. You would look at that and you'd say that that's, you know, bad debt.
Yeah.
You assign a percentage value to it. You wouldn't assume you're going to get a hundred percent of it.
Yeah, well, we're, we're, we're still trying to get a hundred because there was one instance where there were two different details. One was for every source gas and one was for every source electric. That went on one invoice and that was not paid. I corrected that, sent two different invoices. We have since been paid both.
And when, and you're just looking solely at the cruiser fee as the source of funding, not the salary or the town fee. But the total on the right-hand side is the sum of everything across.
Yeah, the pound fee is what is the add new fee, which is ten percent. Uh, and the cruiser fee is strictly the cruiser fees.
Good luck.
So can I just, about what is the impetus for the, for the new cruisers? Is it the number of fishing hours or?
Uh, currently, the pickup cruiser's bought by Grant. How many miles will it achieve?
About thirty-three thousand with the hours on it is twenty-five miles per hour, how Ford says. So the idle hours, when you add it together, it has a hundred thousand. Not, not on the odometer, but on the.
Except standard that triggers or is like a certain number of hours.
The sedan has, I believe, a hundred and sixteen thousand on your odometer. That has approximately, I think, nine hundred idle, idle hours.
Yeah, no, nine thousand.
Or nine thousand.
Like, like much as profitable.
So you've heard me say this statement again, that I question the profitability of the road traffic detail operation. Um, when you take the time, which is salaried, your scheduling on the clock, I believe you're, you're doing the scheduling work on police work. You're not, you're not doing detail work when you're scheduling. You're on your salary.
Sometimes. I mean, this past weekend I did, I spent.
I mean, I know you've got to cover the demand. So like those call open the night before, the morning of, you spend a good chunk of time scheduling. Someone spends a good chunk of time making appeals, writing them up, passing them through call up. There's payroll operation. They get you off duty paying. Um, and then there's the collections, right? If someone's not paying on time, someone's on the phone, starting down payments. I've done analysis about this over the years when we were doing the police working group and really trying to ascertain, is there profit? Is this truly a money-making department? And I have consistently shown math that says no. The ten percent doesn't cover all this time. You're taking time to schedule this work when you could be doing other police activities. And now I'm questioning if the driver of the new, if the trigger is idling time and those cruisers are sitting doing road traffic details. We're in a vicious circle of having to buy new cars to put them out on the road traffic.
The, the new cruisers were not beyond details.
I see.
It would be strictly patrol. The older fleet, we have a car which was acquired for free. It was a black car, black and marked. That, that car is ready to fail at any time.
But that's what you're putting out?
That's going out, sitting in your idling. Oh, we got one on the government surplus.
Okay.
The person could be used for that as well.
Yeah.
Or would use for that.
I mean, again, I, I'm not going to say more than that. I say this at every town meeting. I question the profitability. I see how you're trying to be creative to acquire new equipment. And I, um, just really wonder if there's a way to do traffic details with citizen flaggers.
They, they cost just as much money.
They're the same amount of money, yours for us.
And I've got one other thing. We, we're doing ten out of forty and we give it all away. We're giving away the, the other, other departments that are.
It's the ocean, it's the state.
Yeah, that's a fair, right? Well, I'm just saying, we're, we're losing that. It could be in town, just, it's too many. We, we don't have it.
Yeah.
To put out there, so.
Anyway.
You have to give them away. I got it.
What's the forecast cost from the cruisers?
Uh, the the, the, which I, I definitely can get lower is, well, two of them were a hundred and seventy-one thousand total.
Hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Correct. They're, they're approximately forty, forty-five on the lot and then our week outfitting.
The lights, you're still fully loaded, seventy thousand.
Probably eighty, eighty to eighty-five.
Yeah. There goes.
Well, I'll pick up a hundred grand.
Yeah, I know.
One ton pickup.
Well, there goes.
Thirty-six thousand a piece.
Which in today's world is not really a lot of money.
And it's starting to fall already.
You said thirty-six thousand?
No. Eighty, eighty-six thousand. Eighty-six thousand a piece for a, a car that is outfitted for all of the requirements of policing. So, and they have a lot.
Will it have a camera?
What?
Will it have cameras finally?
Where? We have body worn cameras. Uh, the cameras right now are fraying with batteries. So we're killing batteries. So we have body worn cameras.
You do have the actual.
Pusher button. It's, but when we have the cruiser cameras, they, whatever reason they short out and frame batteries, the cruiser failed, which is a problem. We had one on the Dave Wood Cruiser and, you know, it's failed.
I mean, that's the, the, the cameras and not the computers, all the computer equipment you have to have.
Your law, that was a problem. That was years ago. We didn't have computers in the car.
That's how we do it, right?
Yeah, now we do.
So with, with both the cameras and the computers. Something about the battery.
Yeah, we have, but we have body worn ones.
Think it's definitely a good plan for the future, I mean.
Well, I think that this is a topic that probably needs more discussion.
Well, that's why, that's why I got.
More discussion with, uh, some, some key people. It needs to be brought to the finance committee and in one of their meetings for discussion. It needs to be brought to town accountant and the town treasurer. Um. Who else? For verbals raising their hand. No.
I can't find the hand raise button, but I just wanted to weigh in if I could about, um, the other options that we have already explored. Before getting to this one. Can y'all hear me okay? Can y'all hear me? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, you know, we did explore, you know, the used vehicles. The used non-police vehicles from the auction, um, and we even looked at a, what seemed like a good vehicle out of cold rain. Um, and honestly, they all end up being expensive. They probably only have a lifespan of about five years. They're not outfitted properly, um, and, and they really weren't a good investment. So I, I feel that these cars, if we get them new and actually have a very, um, proactive maintenance. Schedule on them with some oversight, I'm hoping we could be looking at getting ten years in, out of each of these vehicles without any concern. And not have to deal with a hand-me-down that literally has a shortened lifespan from neglect. So, you know, the other options really just don't pan out and we do need vehicles. Um, and this just, this actually, I think, investment-wise, because of the specific need. Uh, of having the vehicle really operate and be reliable and to last with our climate. You know, with the rust, we, we really need to think about, you know, getting these vehicles new and taking good care of them and being responsible for them. So, um, you know, just so you know, we have really, really looked at these other options of how else we can get a vehicle that's good. For less money and, and those options just dead end, so.
Thank you, Roberta. The other thing about making, departments making money, I mean, get a seven hundred thousand dollar fire truck in our department, don't make no money. That's, that's.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that too. Yeah, profitability isn't really what our department needs to do. Um, I do think that there's enough money coming in to offset some costs. Yeah, 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 no, I, I, I worry sometimes if we focus on profitability too much, the department has other roles, so we need to consider that.
I wanna make sure, uh, everyone's clear. I absolutely think our police department is a service-forward department. The police department, however, describes itself as a revenue generating activity. I'm, I'm just saying, the revenue is not necessarily covering the expenses to generate it. That's my point. And that's fine, that's where we go.
Right. Well, I'm trying to help, help it pay for some of itself, so that's better than coming out of all our pockets. So, yeah, touch base with them other people and get it out there to, you know, get it posted on the minutes and stuff and get people to talk about it. Get it on a meeting and. See how people vote for it. It's about all we can do. Jerry?
Then what's the ultimate cost of the car within, uh, interest and everything else? About a hundred and six thousand per car?
Well, it's interest rate of five point nine nine percent, which isn't too bad.
You know, five, okay.
So.
Won't be that high then?
No. It's enough, but it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's not a horrible interest rate. I know a lot of dealers are eight to ten percent nowadays.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question.
That's, that's more than.
It looks like it'll be the one seventy-one, eight twenty-five is what it said, amount of net finance.
Right, then plus the interest.
Yes.
But also if that's how much you have to pay down and whatever, that changes, you know, total interest you pay.
Can y'all clarify if you're talking about two cruisers or one? You, it keeps different numbers, huh?
Two.
Two.
Two, if I can speak. Yeah, two cruisers. So why, why does that, that was started and then. And the money can then save up after we pay them off and then go for one at a time, uh, we're starting at zero. And, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to do is, you know, the, the worst case scenario is. You know, the sergeant goes out to a call, he's coming to your house, the car's got, you figure out it's like three hundred and thirty-six thousand miles around there with the idle hours. And the motor blows up on the way to the call and can't help you. And then we're, we're responsive service, we're only as good as the vehicles that can get us there. And that's the bottom line. And what we're trying to do it in a way that is cutting costs. And not just saying we're gonna go out the general fund and can you just give capital, can you just buy us a car? Keep it going. We're, we're trying anything outside the box, which I was asked to do. And see if there's a way that we can offset some expense to the town fairs. That's all we're trying to do.
Well, the town has been pretty good. We haven't paid a lot for vehicles.
A lot, it was twenty-one thousand, which is. It's actually the remaining, they're trying to find.
Right. So.
This is almost a thousand dollars, you get that from Greenfield.
Right.
That was for the life car. They gave the car, we didn't pay the life.
So we've done pretty good as far as taxpayer money you can spend on cruisers.
We had a big repair last year, that was the board, six, four, two thousand.
Well, at some point in nickel and dimes, you're the death, so. But, just get it out there, just put that word and get people to talk about it. They vote on it, so. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on agenda was the bill of spending. Peter sent me an email. He did turn in the paperwork and Ross said he's gonna, he gets it back. And, uh. We'll go from there. Cave law payment of a hundred, hundred, one thousand forty dollars and forty cents.
I note that we approved the case involved payment of one thousand forty dollars and forty cents.
On favor.
And I was wondering, what was, what has he done about the, uh, fire fit today? This building?
That was supposed to be on the agenda.
Right.
Needs to be fixed.
Right.
They had Russ come look at it a year ago. Peter just got some paperwork over to him. Cause we're gonna repair it, I believe. Um, cause a new one covered is over a hundred thousand dollars or something, by then this building, new building. Um, so Russ is gonna come up with some quotes. And hopefully we'll be repaired. If we leave part of it attached to the building, we don't have to meet the new code and we can repair what's there. If we tear it all off, you have to meet today's code and.
That's where it gets expensive.
This is where it gets really expensive, so.
And how would it be funded then?
That, I thought they had money set aside for you to go.
Yeah, the buildings committee has, has budget money that is, was, was, has been. Uh, voted in town meeting but never used if they do, you know, move over to cover those expenses.
I'd like to see it, I'd like to see stuff happen upstairs, so.
Of course.
Yeah, but you know what? You just realize if you do that, it is the owl, because all this.
There's so many other things we should do upstairs, besides these leaves.
Yeah.
Never mind, I, it slipped my mind.
No, it'd be nice to, I mean, we can use upstairs as long as it's less than fifty people. That's what I was told by Dave.
Really? Right now?
Right now. You just can't have over fifty people.
I was told twenty-five.
Well, I talked to Dave the other day and, I'm sure he knows the fire code, so he said fifty people.
That's good to hear.
So I think we should, you know, utilize it.
Absolutely.
They've done a lot of work to this building and it should be used, so. Instead of hiding in this little room all the time. So hopefully soon we'll have some more knowledge on it and, um.
Once it's repaired, then we can build about fifty people.
Yes, yes. But I'm sure that was built, what, in the thirties or something like that?
Forty-four, I don't know.
Yeah.
They used the road before that.
Yeah, upstairs, yes.
Does the fire code require two?
Yeah, this one right here.
Does the fire code require two exits in upstairs?
Yeah, there's two exits.
But you can't use it. Okay, so it's gonna be fixed.
Right, that's gonna be fixed.
Didn't you just say we can have fifty people up there right now?
Yes.
But if it's not fixed.
We can still have fifty people up there.
It's not.
Cause, cause they can make it down the stairs and the timely.
Not a stampede, not if the fires are in.
Well, you jump out the window, I hope. And that's just the, the rules, right? This is the fire rules that, you know. Jerry?
I had a discussion with Peter, uh, Jerry, at, uh, South Central. Had a discussion with Peter just a week or two ago about that because the town website says eight people can occupy it. He's been saying fifty and I remember one time Bonnie and I had counters and we counted the people, hit fifty, we had to deliver to the church for the meeting. And he said that the latest thing he was able to find in the code, was, got to see right now, is thirty. Until we get the rights to get fixed. It's a new, new something in the code.
Alright.
Well, either way, it needs to get fixed. We need to be able to utilize the building, so. I've been stirring the shit up, so. Trying to get it happening, so I'd like to have stuff upstairs and fun, so. So we probably should figure out really what the fire code is, so we don't get in trouble and, uh, have it posted somewhere in the building.
As it posts.
Yeah.
Um, what other than that, I'm looking forward to having stuff upstairs.
I think broadband stuff that you're coming to the.
Yeah, we're getting closer, a couple more little things. We got end of the year, dear select board and finance committee members. I respectfully request the select board and the finance committee to approve the following fiscal year twenty-five transfers. For some to add a mask guideline chapter law.
Mask general law.
Yeah. Two thousand to town office expense from vocational tuition. Two thousand to IT service expense from vocational tuition. Eight thousand to machinery upkeep from vocational tuition. Five thousand to general highway from vocational tuition. Four thousand to building operations from building repair or vocational tuition. I am awaiting a response from the buildings committee chair in regards to use of the building repair funds. And thank you all for your attention to the end of the year budget shortages.
So we need to vote?
Yes.
I vote that we approve Paula's letter to make transfers mostly from the vocational tuition or the building repair. To the town offices, IT service expense, machinery upkeep, general highway and building operations.
On favor?
Aye.
That one's.
There's two more. So this one is for. Insurance?
For the, for Maya, the fiscal year twenty-two-sixth renewal proposal. Town of Plainfield is an important Maya member program for participants due to the financial strength of our programs. Favorable loss history, we'll, we're able to offer you a renewal proposal. With a rate increase of four point nine percent.
We're pleased to offer this.
Why they put that over there so you can't read it?
Do you think that the next copy doesn't have?
Oh, to extend the two point five percent prepaid premium for fiscal year twenty-two-sixth. If your balance is paid by August first, twenty twenty-five.
And what coverage is that referring to?
Uh, is this the high, no, it's fire, no.
Poverty liability and workers' compensation coverages.
Yeah.
So all the town buildings.
Right.
And the staff and work, workman's comp.
Cause I think, believe we have two insurance companies and they, it gets confusing.
Do we have to vote on it?
Yeah. Paul must think it sounds good because you sent it over here, so.
Well, I.
Third page, or if it has. The actual amount in it.
Yeah, that's. This is premiums and.
Well, we got insurance. I vote that we, um, approve the, um, M I I A insurance. Proposal for fiscal year twenty-two-sixth.
That's a good.
All favor.
Aye.
And the final one is for the fiber optic policy. I don't know if.
Yes, so I have an update on that.
Right.
So since our network went live, we have been insuring the fiber plant assets, which are one point. One million in fiber optic cable, forty-eight miles of cable. Uh, through a special policy that we were, we got access to also through MIA. Um, the hub and the contents of the electronics in the hub are under the policy you just approved. That's a town building. So that is a separate policy, but I have, um, I got word. A couple of months ago that the Hanover. Insurance company was going to raise the deductible on the fiber asset plant. From ten thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars and was going to increase the premiums by twenty-five percent. Uh, that is due to region-wide and nationwide friendly strong damages. They're, the, the Hanover. I think they don't want to insure us, so I actively sought other options, um, including Acadia. So we asked our agent at Cabot, uh, which is the MIA agency. MIA is Mass Insured Local Insurance Association. Um, I asked the agent to shop, uh, to whomever would offer. And they secured a second quote from Acadia, which is keeping the deductible at ten thousand dollars and is actually. Um, a three thousand dollar lower premium. Uh, we were up to, close to nine thousand dollars for the annual premium. And this one is coming in at five, fifty, fifty-five hundred. Same deductible, eighty percent co-insurance, which we've had. I also shopped the coverage through Perma, which is the Public Utilities Resource Management Association. And up until yesterday, I thought that they were going to be more competitive than Acadia. Um, but their membership fee tips it over. They require a fifteen hundred dollar annual membership fee on top of the insurance prep. That was very close. Acadia is the winner. I recommend that we switch from Hanover to Acadia. And I believe as manager, I should.
That's what it says right here. It says, the Acadia proposal is okay with Kimberly. She can sign it as MLP manager. Thanks, Paul.
Great. So this is the first time we've actually had choices. I feel like Paula and, and the insurance agent did a great job trying to secure us options and I'm glad that.
Options are good.
We'll probably save three thousand dollars this year.
Still three thousand.
Insurance that we've never used. Um, and, and because I'm afraid of filing a claim. I'm sure you had another options to consider filing.
Well, they also might drought you too if you file.
This year was one of them. So I will also update you that I'm in conversation with the area MLP managers. Of our twenty region towns to think about a self-insurance concept where instead of paying out the premium, we bank it. And we just build up. As we've been building up the stabilization fund, we can build up an insurance stabilization fund or something. So we'll see if that makes sense and if it makes sense to do it on a town-by-town basis or a regional basis. Um, but I'm still thinking that this might be a one-time loss leader and we're gonna see the same thing, you know, a year over. Um, so I will come up and sign that. I just wanted to give two other broadband updates. Um, I'm still trying to wrangle Mark Hebert to connect with Whip City to get equipment up there to repair that vault that got gouged.
Oh, it's on his list of stuff to do, so.
I know, so I'm gonna nudge him again.
No, he was talking about the other day, stopped and talked to me, so.
Okay.
He's on vacation for a week or so.
Okay, that's good to know. I didn't know that. I've been trying to get him.
He's trying to line up like concrete and stuff, because there's some guys doing some construction in town too, so we're not paying for a short load of concrete, so it gets.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah. And just to be clear, we are not pouring and placing something, we're taking the precast vaults. Because the, there's notches for where the concrete goes, but I know he's gonna pour ballers for me to prevent this.
Right.
From happening.
Yes.
Alright, so I will clarify that he, I will try to connect with him again and, and see what his exact vacation days are.
I think it's, he's taking a week.
Next week?
Well, this, this whole week, right now.
Okay, that's why he's not responding. Okay, good. Okay, that's why he's not responding. Okay, good. I will, uh, keep, keep working on that. I just need to get Whip City to roll a crew up here and that.
So I think he, he called Whip City.
Yeah, he did.
They gave him a little bit of a run around and.
Everybody's running around. I'm trying to slice through and get the work done.
So he's on it, he's just gotta, it's just gotta get all the bases.
Yeah, that's good to know. Okay, I think that's it. How am I?
Want to talk about this, Judy?
Um, just, uh, only to the, to the point that, um, I think we need to give our approval.
Right.
For him to send it. The only thing that's different from the one that the compound. Conservation commission saw in their meeting is the final paragraph, which, I mean, all of this is very legal. I'm not. Going to have this posted right now because it hasn't been sent to the recipient yet.
Right.
And I don't think that would be a wise thing to do.
Nope.
Um, further, uh, the final paragraph is further note. So it, it goes through all of the wetlands conservation. There was a court order. It didn't get complied with by the previous owner. The order still applies to the land, so the new order is responsible for it. Basically says you're responsible for it. And if you don't fix it, then, um. Pursuant to the Wetlands Protection Act, you are hereby notified that failure to remedy these outstanding violations by October fifteen, twenty twenty five. Will subject you to litigation as well as additional enforcement orders and penalties levied by the town. And then the last paragraph is please note that the structure on the property may not be occupied as a dwelling. Until such time as all applicable codes, including the state sanitary code, the built, state building code. Plainfield zoning bylaw and all other applicable rules and regulations have been complied with. Thank you. So I didn't think I was unilaterally allowed to. Give him dispensation to mail this, so I'm bringing it to this group.
I said mail it.
Jack, you've been in the heart of it. You wanted to see a copy of the letter?
No, I just. Curious, I've read the letter, but I didn't see the last paragraph.
Yeah, that was what he added in response to feedback. And basically he did. Some, I think that there were some people who wanted him to get as specific as he did where he was quoting the wetlands law. And he didn't want to do that for two reasons. Number one. Uh. It's not our job to anticipate, anticipate his violations. All the laws are publicly available. It's his job to find those regulations. And it would have cost us a lot more money. It would have taken a lot of time for him to sit down and research all of it. It would have made it a much longer letter. Really what we're trying to do is enforce the court ordered. Uh, reparations. And forewarn him that he better pay attention to all of the other. Regulations that exist in town that got the property into the situation it's in now anyway.
I do have a question about that property though. Back when the guy was milling wood there. He drove his tractor all over the place and bumbles the wood and.
When was that?
Was after year two thousand. But then the place was a disaster and I mean, he drove his tractor everywhere, but that was alright. Then, I mean, not saying the last people was alright, but I mean. It is America and it's landed three. I mean.
Well, to a certain extent.
It, it just, it, I just don't know why it's alright for, this guy could do that and this guy got in trouble for cutting a couple of trees down. And. I don't, it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, if your neighbor breaks the law, does that make it okay for you to break the law?
Well, my, my neighbor does. It's not my business, so. He pays his taxes, he does what he wants. So I'm just asking questions, that's all. It's just, I remember the guy there cutting wood, milling wood, sawing it and it was. It was not a good looking piece of crap, but. Get a tractor and forks and move bumbles the wood and set it all over the place, cut trees down, I mean. So. I don't know.
Have to go back through records and see what was determined.
Right.
At the time.
Right. I know it was after two thousand because I was driving.
Oh, was that in two thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I can tell, um, Michael Thornton C. L. that he can send this letter? Okay.
I mean, I think the guy that bought the place is trying to do what's right. I mean, he, he's been in touch with the build inspector and he's going through the, the channels that he has to do to try to make it right, so.
I have just one observation because I was curious about the enforcement order. The part of the enforcement order that I read and that lodged into my head. When I read it was that any advertisements for that property by realtors had to disclose the fact. That a, an enforcement order existed.
There was no realtors, cashed in.
There was a realtor, there was a realtor, but it was a quick claim. And so we don't have any access to the. Purchase and sale agreement between the seller and the buyer.
I'm just saying like, I never, I saw the ads for that property. There was no reference to. The enforcement order and, and any advertisements that I saw from Zellman's work.
Well, that group was a little shady, so.
Oh, yeah. So I mean, I just think, yes, buyer beware, of course.
Right.
Do your research, have your representation, but this person.
The woman that was looking into buying it or doing farm and she looked into it before she even put an offer in, uh, but she didn't end up buying it. She wanted to grow some vegetables and some fruit trees and stuff like that and. She never got it, so, but she did follow up on all the stuff before.
Do you think this will come as a news bulletin to the new owner?
No.
I mean, he knows there are issues.
And the taxes have been paid, so, or at least.
Well, have they paid, has the new owner paid this year's taxes? They were behind by one payment.
Right, but I mean, we've got some of our money.
We've got most of them.
So it's going in the positive direction, I think, for now.
We'll put him on notice that.
People are watching.
I mean, we, our hope is, the intention of writing this letter is to. Put the fear of value in that he's gonna get sued. And then be stuck with a much bigger bill and so it's cheaper for him to comply or the, the path of least resistance is compliance, not defiance. And we don't know how he's going to react to this letter. But if he replies, the more the better.
We'll find out. Can't be worse than the last one, so. Trying some more than that, kind of.
Hey, Ben and Judy, I don't know if people can see, hey, I'm sorry about jumping in. Uh, I had a question, but it's not related to this particular topic, so I can wait if y'all are still going with it, but I just wanted to catch it before the end of the meeting.
Go.
Okay, so, um, I still have, uh, Bob Maelstrom's kind of request on my mind and I'm curious about, um. As it relates to just having an understanding of what's on the special warrant. Could the agenda just say what the topics are? So you, you know, there's six articles or seven articles in the future. When this comes up, could the agenda just say we're gonna vote on the special warrant and then it just says the topics are police revolving fund, capital. Um, planning committee, uh, right? And doesn't have to put out the full warrant, but then people at least know what topics. Are being discussed. And then it doesn't violate the lawyer's recommendations. It doesn't confuse people, um, to have the draft out there, but it still gives people an understanding of. What's being discussed.
Several of them relate to the same, to the same general category of issue, like just saying, there are two articles relating to moving. To moving funds from free cash to different stabilization funds before the end of the year.
I think you could just say, moving free cash to stabilization, uh, police re- revolving fund, capital planning committee. Right? It's just a way to just say what's being talked about so that people know that the, that the topics are happening, but it doesn't put you in violation of. The lawyer's recommendations. It's not confusing to people. I just. I'm putting out another suggestion because I heard a, a requi- a request from somebody in town that wants more information.
Sandy, do you have something?
Sandy Moran. Uh, yes, I like Delilah's, um. Suggestion. I think that's, that's a good, um, because I was very curious also. Today, when I looked at the agenda at the kiosk and. Um, I kind of wondered, well, what is on the agenda? Because I had thought from. The meeting, I come every meeting. And when I had heard some of this other stuff, um. And I'm wondering, what is it? I thought it was only going to be a two or three article. Um, warrant. And. Well, I understand that. I thought it still would be nice to have known and, and you could maybe look into it a little bit before the meeting, so you could discuss it. Um, and have questions even here.
Yeah, I, 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 questions are fine. I guess I'm just a little bit confused because for the annual town meeting warrant. That is not finalized until. Is it, is it seven days that it has to be posted?
Right.
Right, and, and. Why working on that until the very last minute and we're not posting it on the website beforehand, but. That seems to be okay and that's a much bigger meeting.
No, if I may.
Okay.
So, yes. If you come to the meetings or you zoom in during your annual town meeting, there is a discussion almost every week with different things that are happening. Or what, uh, maybe. On the, on the warrant. Um, why is it on the warrant? Discussions of, of money. So if you are that interested, you come to the, the meeting, you are getting little bits of it here and there. But the special town meeting, it was talked about quickly at your last meeting and then boom, we're right here. And so, I mean, there's nothing in between. We're not hearing discussions. We're not hearing anything.
Well, if there were, there were at least two articles that were discussed at the annual town meeting.
But I was not at, wasn't able to be at the town meeting. I've never been to a town meeting, but this time I did because I had a wedding to go to.
I know, I know, and that was a much higher purpose. I'm not taking issue with that, but I'm saying. There is only so much we can do to put it out there. There were two things that were on the warrant for the annual town meeting that got tabled. And we, we said then, I said there'd be a special town meeting. That was on May third. And now we're talking about June twenty fifth. And so there were, take, take a third of the, of the agenda off because you could have. Somebody could have, one could have. Noticed that and said, oh, I care about that and gone out and followed up on it. And, you know, the, 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 that was the police revolving fund and the capital planning committee. The, I think that the movement of funds from free cash into other accounts is a. Pretty routine thing that happens at the end of the year. At least it's happened every year that I've been here. And so if you want, if you care about that, you can go talk to Paula and she'll tell you what we think we're gonna be moving around. And the only other ones that, I mean, I just. I'm surprised that this is such a surprise to people. I mean, changing from Robert Rules of Order to. The town meeting time, the handbook of parliamentary procedure by the State Moderating Association. Maybe that is a hot button issue for somebody, but to me it seems very routine. Um. I, I mean, if that, I'm just saying, I'm surprised that there is this kind of reaction.
Well, I'm ready to drop. I, I, I don't think we need more discussion.
I think it's a great, I think Delilah's idea is actionable, easy to do.
Right.
It's a great idea. And the time we took to go around again, you could have written the bullets under the agenda.
And I would just say also, Sandy, Sandy, um. When I went to the town meeting, I picked up copies of all the paperwork, including the warrants for Barbara Burrell because she was out of town. So she had an opportunity to bring you through all the warrants, so. My suggestion would be that if you can make it to the town meeting, that you make sure that somebody picks up for you the paperwork. So that you can read through that and at least.
Well, that's all different for us sitting here.
Everybody's side of me. Big towards each other.
We gotta find our own information, too, like.
Yeah.
We don't get any. The most you gotta. Friends find it.
Did I say something as a person who typically reads the agenda? I think it's a good idea to do that, but some of it, like Judy said, is very legitimate. Like the Roberts Rule of Order one from Brian Popcorn. I didn't have that until pretty close to when I posted the agenda, so.
I think, I think you, we all have to make. Do with what we have. It's, it's just a way of getting a little bit more info out there. It's not saying that it's gonna be perfect. It's just trying to. Both respect what you all are up against and also trying to meet the needs of something that we heard from a resident, that's all. So. We get that it's not gonna be perfect, but. I, to Judy's point, some of these things have been talked about for a minute and it's okay to just. Throw them on since we know that they'll be on. It just, the, not the full warrant, just the topics. I, I, I really don't. I'm, I'm, I'm open to hearing that if, if it's an issue and if it's like causing issues, but.
Finished speaking and now you're talking over her.
I couldn't hear anybody.
Shannon was not finished speaking. And now you're talking over her.
Got it.
She couldn't finish her point.
Got it. I didn't hear that she wasn't done. Sorry, Shannon.
No, it's totally fine. I, I just, I agree with you. I think it's a good idea and I can do that in the future with the board's approval. Um, I'm happy to do that, but for some of them, it just, like, I honestly, it's like last minute for me too. So I'm kind of know as much as everyone else in the room knows sometimes.
Stepping towards each other.
Alright, the only other thing that I had that I thought we needed to talk about, but I prefer not to talk about it tonight because it will take a long time, I think. I think we can schedule a different, a special select board meeting to do it, is the rubric. The, the, remember when we talked about the, the host community agreement? That, and, and application that we shared last, in our last meeting. The last four pages are a rubric. This is in order to be compliant with the state cannabis commission's, um, requirement. That all towns, uh, that are permitting cannabis adopt, uh, what is it, a. Social equity and host community agreement policy. And then include an application and the rubric by which you're going to evaluate the different. Uh, applicants for licenses or special permits or host community agreements or whatever. And most of it is sort of, we don't have a say in it, so it's, you know, they've said you have to do this. But the last four pages are the application and the rubric. And, um. We can get this posted before we have our discussion about it. It is, it, they, they give you samples. They give you categories. I read them at the last meeting. I'm not sure if you can do them. Cannabis business experience diversion prevention, in other words, not letting people under twenty one or eighteen for medical patients. Have access to the cannabis. Energy and environmental concerns, consumer education, security concerns, and there's a, a little description of each. Local involvement and nuisance mitigation, location and traffic management. Uh, timeline, compliance, labor and employment, and then the last section is equity. We're not allowed to touch equity. That is mandated by the cannabis commission and that's twenty five percent of the score. So all of those other categories are, there are ten categories, are seven point five points, seven. Seven and a half points per category. We are permitted to increase or decrease the weighting that we give to those different considerations. Depending upon what we're concerned about. So for instance, I, I looked at it and I thought, you know. I don't think that traffic management is a big issue at the end of Bloom Street. Because it's a dead end road and there's only two cannabis operations and maybe two houses. So I would be inclined to lower the value of that consideration in evaluating competitive bids. Um, and I would increase some others. I think local involvement in nuisance mitigation is probably a bigger concern. Make that higher. Um, and so. I mean, I'm happy to take a stab at what I think it ought to be and then share that with the rest of the select board. So that it would expedite maybe the conversation, but I'm also willing to take my stab at it. And post it on the website so that anybody in town who cares deeply about it. And post it on the website so that anybody in town who cares deeply about it can also.
Right.
Agree or disagree with the kinds of priorities that I thought were relevant.
Sounds good to me.
It would have been all changed if they changed it once the.
The cannabis commission did?
They had a whole new commission.
Oh, well, I'll give Nicole.
Have new moves, but that won't happen for a whole year.
Oh, well, we have to do this in order to negotiate with the guy.
They keep changing it.
I know, I know. It's a giant.
Big change. That's all.
Yeah.
Well, they they keep going all bankrupt, so they keep changing it to try to favor their business and it's not helping.
Judy, could I have the name of the gentleman who is um working towards these streets? I'm sorry, the name of the gentleman.
Daniel Till, D A N I E L, Daniel Till, T I L L. And he currently lives in Michigan, but he is planning on moving to Plainfield. And he comes back often and you know, he he his goal is to negotiate the host community agreement. Between now and sometimes towards the end of July. To submit his cannabis license application. Um, by the by the fall, the early fall, let's say September sometime. And then hopefully get licensed. I think out of our hands, we don't know. I mean, I hear that the cannabis commission takes a long time to license people. And then um plant his first crop next spring.
Also over Brum Street. Uh, Chris Rue still hasn't caught up on his taxes, so hopefully he's not proceeding without his license.
That's interesting.
So I don't know how we monitor that, but.
I don't know either.
Isn't that what we have police for?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if that's. We we gotta look in what the the operation to figure that out is. I don't really do anything, but I think the the cannabis control is something, I think.
Two days.
Right, well, we have an institute that's a regi. So he won't sign off on his host agreement until he's caught up on his taxes, so.
I'll be in touch with you.
Right, just hopefully he's not gonna operate on a breach contract and then. We'll have to go from there, I guess. He's going on the partial that they sold, like what he could sell if it was dying, so. And that was a pretty good chunk, but he's still a pretty good chunk behind.
Ben, can I bring something else up for the board to consider of your future meeting?
Yeah.
That is the um town hall water situations. Um, it's been a problem now for I think a year and a half.
No, it's not that long.
It's been pretty close.
It's been gross, yeah. Because I've been hauling water for my house for every C O A luncheon. Uh, for that long. And I've talked with the board of health. They said that somebody used to um dredge the springs and that will fix things. But they don't know who that was. Um, it was.
It's still sad.
Ed, okay. So if they can't be Ed now, maybe who's gonna take over that responsibility? And um the other consideration may be putting in a well. Um, another thing that was discussed was having a. Uh, one of those portable water containers.
That we were supposed to give.
We weren't supposed to get one and I think.
No, we weren't supposed to get one that goes in the kitchen.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think Mark was gonna take responsibility for getting that. But again, it's been over a year since.
Well, I don't think it was Mark. It was Walter.
I think it was Walter because Mark was only it's only been a year about a year that Mark's been on.
Yeah, it was Walter because.
It was Mark because Mark put his from town hall into the town offices.
I wanna see him.
Yeah. Well, if we can get one here, at least in the meantime until the spring or. This gets and then we can also retest the water, right? We spoke to that.
I know when you do like well work, they you bleach it, like they tell you to bleach your well.
Well, I got it. Off it all out. Yeah. Now, first water, you take, let's be fresh water. We place and we bleach it. And we pump it back out again. Close the water shows, you know, test it. Every time I add tests, so if that's test, then you're well.
When I had my well, Dan Menchell told me they put a well pump in, but he says take a garden hose, put it in the top of the well, double gallon and bleach down in it. And let it run for a long time and then it gets all rid of all the bacteria, all the stuff.
I know.
Quite often, it's kind of the same principle. You gotta. Yeah, because what you that clean side of the tiles. The paddles.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is we know what the solutions are, but we don't know who's gonna take care of it.
Walter is the one who bought the one at town at the town offices, so I can see which one it was and I think he got it out. And then I can check in with Peter about it because I need to check in with him about.
I've checked in with everybody, Peter, Mark, and everybody tells me. Oh, they they're just punt the ball like it's somebody else's responsibility. So I think the board has to say, who? Is going to do what?
Everything just he said, he ran it around now that the town the board has more power than he does.
No, we just passing information along. That's pretty much.
I mean, we we can tell them to do it and if they don't do it, what do we do?
That's true.
I'll ask, I'll ask him and see if. Yeah, check it out. And if you check in with multiple people and they end up with two things on water, we're good.
We're done.
I hope we adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are done.